All right. Thank you guys very much for being with us tonight. The fourth of our five K and A Town Hall meetings. This particular Town Hall is being hosted by the Green River, Penny Rile, and Western Chapters of the Kentucky Nurses Association. So, welcome to our candidates, legislators who are on with us, and to all of our members who have joined to hear what everyone has to say. So, thank you guys very much. We also thank our affiliate organizations. We have 22 nursing and other healthcare oriented organizations that are official partner affiliates with us. And so, they have also helped to promote this event tonight. So, thank you all very much. Just to give you a little bit of an orientation and introduction to Kentucky Nurses Association. We were established in 1906 as the organization to establish the nursing profession, scope of practice, and standardized education for nurses in Kentucky. By statute, the K and A represents and speaks for 89,000 voting Kentucky nurses who make up more than half of the healthcare workforce in our state and across the nation. K and A is comprised of the Kentucky Nurses Association, the Kentucky Nurses Foundation, which we call KNF, and KNAK, the Kentucky Nurses Action Coalition. K and A focuses on the profession as a whole. KNF focuses on education, research, and scholarships, and is our nonprofit arm of K and A. KNAK focuses on workforce, including sustainability, to meet healthcare needs. The K and A is responsible for promoting and protecting the professional image of nursing. The history of the Kentucky nursing profession really stands on the shoulders of K and A. There are so many activities that we are involved in that support ongoing basis. One is legislation that supports nursing, nurses, and access to healthcare. K and A appoints nurses to the Nursing Technical Advisory Committee, what we call the TAC, which is actually a subcommittee of the MAC, the Medicaid Advisory Committee for the State of Kentucky. K and A provides recommendations to the governor for appointment on 60th of the KBN. The K and A convenes and collaborates with a bold group of health-related organizational affiliates, like I mentioned before, with whom we address healthcare and nursing issues. We provide continuing education for nurses that can be used for licensure requirements as well as for professional development. K and A has input and impact on nursing school curriculum development. We have an active political action committee, or PAC. K and A participates in workforce analysis and development. The K and A is committed to social justice and the impact of Jedi, which is justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion on healthcare outcomes as outlined in our mission, vision, and values. Just recently, K and A participated with health departments throughout the state of Kentucky to deliver 140,000 COVID vaccinations, over 12,000 COVID tests, and over 100 community listening sessions. And on the COVID test, that number's probably up since this draft was actually created. So, lots of great work on COVID mitigation through K and A. We also have been responding to the tornadoes in Western Kentucky in December, last December in Western Kentucky, Youralls area. And we are currently very involved in flood disaster relief in Eastern Kentucky. So, there are a lot of things that we have going on. This list is really not complete that I just kind of ran through. But it's been a very busy two or three years for the Kentucky Nurses Association. But we have been very, very pleased to be able to engage in our communities and to do everything we can do to promote nursing and the health of our communities. So, at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Delinor Manson. And she's going to give us kind of some logistics for the evening. And thank you, Delinor.
Thank you very much for being with us today. I am Delinor Manson. I'm the CEO for the Kentucky Nurses Association, the foundation, and the Nurses Action Coalition. We are recording, and this Zoom recording will be on the K and A YouTube channel about five days. It takes us about that long to do the editing. I am going to ask you all to introduce yourselves in just a few minutes. And I just want you to know that you'll get a minute and a half. And that's kind of important to know because I have this mute button over here. So, if you go over a minute and a half, then I will say thank you very much, and I will turn off your mic. Also, when we get to the part where we're going to be doing questions and answers, you again will have a minute and a half. And I have my mute button right here. So, what we're going to be doing after I allow you to introduce yourselves, we are going to review the K and A 2022 priorities. Dr. Welch is going to be doing that. And then, our lobbyist, Julie Denton, and our president-elect, Dr. White, will be moderators for questions that we'll ask. And then, we will also entertain questions and comments that will be in the Q and A. And then, I will moderate that portion. I'm going to ask you all to introduce yourself. You get a minute and a half. And I'm going to start with you, Dr. White, because you're the first person that I see.
All right. Well, thank you. My name is Dolores White. And as Delinor mentioned, I serve as the president-elect currently for the Kentucky Nurses Association. And I will transition to president the end of next month. So, I'm looking very forward to serving in that role. Professionally, I work at Northern Kentucky University. I am assistant professor for the graduate program. So, I work with both the masters and the doctorate level. And I also serve as the coordinator for the nurse executive leadership and the nursing education tracks, so those different programs. Welcome, and I look forward to this evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Julie, would you introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm the new lobbyist for the K and A, Julie Denton. I served 20 years in the Senate, and then I was put on probation and I left. And so, I'm thrilled to be working with the nurses. Delinor, you know I can't be straight on this. So, I know some of you, and for those of you who are challengers, if you make it, I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Dr. Welch?
Hi, I'm Brittany Welch. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as the Governmental Affairs Cabinet Chair for the Kentucky Nurses Association. Professionally, I am the Director of Clinical Education for the Kentucky campuses for Galen College of Nursing.
Representative Thomas?
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm State Representative Walker Thomas. I represent District Eight. We did redistricting recently. So, now, my district composes part of Christian County, half of Trigg County, and all of Caldwell County. So, I look forward to representing everyone in those areas. I serve on four committees. I serve on agriculture, transportation, local government. And I am currently the chairman of House Veterans Military Affairs and Public Protections, which a lot of the EMS and fire and things like that come underneath that committee. So, I look forward to working with everyone. I already know Julie out there. And last year, I know we almost got the collaborative agreement through, and we got it halfway. This year, maybe Julie will help, and we'll get it all the way there. So.
Sounds great. Thank you. Representative Ims?
Thank you all for having me. I'm Mary Beth Ims. I'm State Representative in the 5th District, which is Callaway and the other half of Trigg County. I am getting ready to serve my second term. I don't have an opposition in November. So, I will be there in January again. I am looking forward to working with you all. I serve on the Ag Committee, Local Government, and Elections Committee. In the interim, I also serve on the State Government Committee. So, I look forward to working with Julie and the rest of you all in this coming session. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Ms. Dowdy?
Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Velvet Dowdy, and I'm a candidate for State Representative in District 11. And so, just a few things about me. I grew up on a family farm in Graves County. And then, I spent 32 years in education. The last 10 of those were actually in Henderson, Kentucky. And I served 24 years in the science classroom, teaching biology, chemistry, and a variety of other sciences. But then, I also served about eight years in different administrative roles. I have two grown children. I have one four-month-old grandson, Henry. I'm crazy about him. And then, I have a sweet but crazy dog named Saiki. So, I am running very hard for this race, hoping to be the next state representative from Henderson, Kentucky. Actually, District 11 is all of Henderson and Henderson County.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the invite. My name's Wade Williams. I'm the Republican candidate for Kentucky House Representatives, District Four. Currently employed at Baptist Health Deaconess Hospital in Madisonville. We've got about 1,800 employees. 600 of those are nurses. So, that rural healthcare kind of pushed me over the edge in getting in the political race. So, that's kind of one of my areas that I want to focus on. So, I'm looking forward to hearing what you've got to say tonight.
Thank you. And Brittany Hernandez, I didn't have you on my list.
Hi, I'm Dr. Brittany Hernandez Stevenson, and I am running for a state representative for District 15, which is Mullenburg and Butler Counties. I grew up here in Mullenburg County. I actually worked for Madisonville Community College. I am the campus director of our Mullenburg campus, and I'm also an associate professor of communications. So, I'm excited to be here tonight. Thank you all for the invitation. And I understand the shortage because I see it through our programs and our nursing program at the college. So, I'm just interested in hearing what I can do to help because I know just how essential our nurses are. So, thank you again for having me tonight.
Well, thank you for joining us. I think that I have not missed anyone. Dr. Welch is going to review the priorities that the Kentucky Nurses Association identified for 2022. Dr. Welch?
Thank you, Delinor. And I want to thank everyone for joining us and our candidates for joining us. It's very important that we set the stage and we understand where we come from, and especially K and A's legislative priorities. So, it's important to understand that K and A members can be found in every legislative district throughout the state. Every year, the Kentucky Nurses Association works to establish legislative priorities that represent the interests of our key stakeholders. And those key stakeholders are nurses and the communities we serve. Our membership is comprised of leaders in emergency, oncology, and critical care nursing, nursing education, business administration, primary care, school nursing, community health, and so much more. In previous legislative sessions, we have supported placing a school nurse in every school all day, every day. Just as nurses believe in evidence-based practice, we also believe in research-based policy implementation. We believe the research that suggests placing a school nurse in every school will decrease misutilization of emergency departments and improve pediatric chronic disease management. We also believe schools with school nurses have higher standardized testing scores and lower dropout and truancy rates. We believe this because strong research suggests it. Although any of these factors on their own would be an excellent reason for the K and A and legislators to support school nurses, we also believe in the research that suggests for every $1 spent on school nursing yields an overall cost savings of $2.20. To kind of put that into perspective, it's as though we were buying something amazing for a dollar, handing the cashier a $1 bill and receiving $1.20 and change, and still being able to keep that something amazing. Now, in previous legislative sessions, the K and A also supported increasing patient access to care through restructuring of the CAFAS requirement for those who qualify. To put that into perspective of why it's so important to nurses and the communities we serve, if I were to show you a map of Kentucky and color the areas of the state black that were designated as mental health provider shortage areas, the entire map would be black. If I were to show you that same map of Kentucky with all the districts blacked out, which had primary care provider shortage areas, around 84% of the state would be black. Restructuring the CAFAS requirement is not a title or a licensure issue. It's an access issue. It's a patient outcome issue. Data supports the safe utilization of NPs to fill the gap in our healthcare system. NP outcome data is not only at least equivalent in the primary care setting. Research also suggests it's less costly. Kentuckians need access to improved health outcomes. Restructuring the CAFAS can assist with improving access to care. We have established that access to care is appropriate and a priority for the nurses throughout Kentucky. It has also been discussed that we believe in research-based policy solutions in order to increase access. Sexual assault nurse examiners provide essential care to victims during the most vulnerable time in their life. Research suggests that when a victim has access to a sexual assault nurse examiner, there's not only improved patient outcomes, but significantly improved prosecution rates as well. Improved mental health outcomes translates into long-term cost savings. Increasing access to sane nurses through incentive programs to ensure hospitals are able to provide sane nurse training programs can assist in providing Kentuckians with the access they so desperately need. In 2022, the Kentucky Nurses Association supported COVID mitigation efforts. At a time of uncertainty, devastation, and the loss of so many, Kentucky nurses provided support for so many. We supported vaccination efforts, masking, and workforce support. Although it was controversial to some, K and A is always guided by data and what is ethically just. K and A did not just support these measures. In theory, we provided boots-on-the-ground support to thousands of Kentuckians during the most trying time in U.S. and Kentucky history by testing and vaccinating thousands of Kentuckians and by supporting our affiliate organizations. We provided search support to the most underserved areas of Kentucky. This is why nurses are the most trusted profession in the world. Through the most difficult times in Kentucky history, nurses have rose to the occasion and have served in our communities and our hospital and our homes. But nursing is at a point of critical crisis. Although there are 89,000 nurses in the state of Kentucky, we have an estimated shortfall of 36%. Could you imagine walking into a hospital and only 2/3 of it being available and staffed? Consider the implications of that. Consider the patients that will not obtain the necessary care. Think of how that impacts patient outcomes and therefore, healthcare costs. Kentucky Nurses Support Initiatives to Correct the Nursing Crisis. We supported things such as faculty retention and recruitment initiatives, expanded loan forgiveness opportunities, Nurse Emeritus programs, retention programs, and creative solutions in order to attract and retain nurses to the profession. Kentuckians deserve nurses. As previously discussed, these were the 2022 legislative priorities. Each year, the K and A Governmental Affairs Cabinets receive requests for support and opposition for various topics or legislative issues. As these are obtained, there are research and great consideration is made on the impact to K and A's priority stakeholders, nurses and the patients they serve. The Board of Directors then determines K and A's position on the topic based on the evidence provided. K and A values the input of every nurse, every patient, and legislator throughout Kentucky. If you wish to have a topic or bill considered by the K and A, you can simply navigate to the K and A website, click on advocacy, and then click on request to support an issue or legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Welch. Very well done. At this time, I think we will begin with our questions and answers. And I want to remind the attendees that they can put a question or comment in the Q and A section. And we will address those at the end of the discussion with our candidates. All right, Julie, you're on first.
Oh, I'm so excited. Usually, I'm second. So, caught me off guard. So, Dr. White's decided tonight it's age before beauty. Yeah, yeah. So, we will kind of mix up the order as we go so that the first person isn't always the first person. The last person isn't always the last person. So, just understand that just because you're first this time doesn't mean you have to be first every time. So, the first question is, how do you plan to support nurses in the 2023 legislative session? And I'm going to start and go in reverse. Ms. Hernandez Stevenson?
Well, one thing that I want to do is have conversations and listen. I know I talked to one of my colleagues earlier in the week, and we discussed some of these issues already. I personally see a nurse practitioner. So, learning more about some of the restrictions that you all have, I think that it is very important that nurse practitioners do have more access and that the CAPA/CS, I do think that that needs to be changed to where you don't have to pay every year for that to be renewed. Is that correct? You all currently have to pay?
Yes, the collaborative agreement, yes.
Yes. So, I know that there was discussion that you all shouldn't have to pay maybe after so long. And I agree with that because that will help because we all have challenges and we all have things that we have to cover. And so, just life gets expensive. And I think that if we can remove one of those barriers, that will help, and more people will be willing to practice. It will also help with some of the nurse shortages that we have. But I love my nurse practitioner. I know that there are more people who are seeking nurse practitioners. So, listening and trying to help with some of these barriers that you all have is one of the things that I want to do. I can't say what I will do because I've never held this position before. But I know that listening to the people in my area and my district will be one of the main things that I can do.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Mr. Williams, you're next.
Hi, thank you for the question. There's so many ways I can go and what the nurses need for support that I see every day at the hospital. But one of the things that kind of stand out to me is being from a background in law enforcement. I'm a retired chief of police here in Madisonville. I see the lack of support, I think, in the judicial system. I had no idea the assaults and the threats and everything that nurses are succumbed to every single day. And when it gets to the court systems, they just say, oh, maybe the person was sick or whatever it may be. And very often times, more than I'd like to admit, it seems to just get written off. So, you know, I would definitely be interested in, you know, mandatory sentencing or some following up for sure. At least reporting on, you know, what percentage are actually, you know, seeing charges followed through with. So, that's probably number one on my list.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And Ms. Dowdy?
Sure. So, you know, I'm familiar with teacher shortages. But nurses are kind of in the same boat in that we don't have the number of nurses that the state needs to fill all the spots that are available for them. So, I would really like to see the legislature in the next session do some loan forgiveness types of incentives, especially for nurses that go into underserved areas and nurse practitioners that go into those areas to serve the public where there really are places where, you know, available care is miles and miles and miles away. So, doing things of that nature. But then, also, here's the other thing. And I know pay is important. But speaking as a former teacher, that's not the whole thing. There's a lot of abuse of nurses. There's a lot of pressure on nurses. And sometimes, you guys are asked to feel, to take the brunt of the abuse and all these types of changes. So, I feel like it's important to have policies that protect our nurses from abuse and those kinds of things. But in addition to that, policies that promote leadership within nurses and how nurses can help determine the future of healthcare in that particular hospital or that particular setting. Because to be quite honest with you, when you look at who does the work in a hospital setting or a clinic setting, it's going to be the nurses. They do the majority of the patient care.
Sorry, Ms. Dowdy, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And Representative Ims?
If I'm not muted, no. Okay. I think it goes back to listening and knowing what the needs are. We have a, I live in Murray, Kentucky, and we have a fantastic nursing program at Murray State University. And I recognize, and it seems like what I'm hearing is there is a shortage, not only of teachers and nurses, but a shortage. And I would hate to go into a hospital like we were told and say, well, we don't have enough nurses for you today. So, I just want to be able to listen and know, understand what the needs are, make that a priority. Obviously, as a legislator, we can't know about everything. And I think that's where Julie comes in as a lobbyist, to come in and inform us of the needs of the nurses.
Great. Thank you very much. And Representative Thomas?
Thank you, Julie. I look forward to working with you. Last year, of course, worked with Jill York some on the collaborative agreement. I think that was HB 354 with Russell Weber. Hopefully, we can get this through. It has bipartisan support over in the House, 84 to 8. So, we just got to get it all the way through the Senate. I think that will do wonders for the rural communities, Western Kentucky, and then the hollers of Eastern Kentucky. I was out there not too long ago. They have a lot of damage and a lot of needs out there. I was excited to see House Joint Resolution 5 pass, which kind of urged y'all to maybe at a point, look at the APRN compact agreements. A few years ago, Speaker Osborne sent me to Washington to study the issue of compacts. And I think compacts are really going to help with licensing across borders. No one has to get a driver's license in every state. Well, hopefully, that will help with nurses not having to get a license in every state, too. And it can attract nurses over into our communities that especially live on these borders. So, I already have the APRN compact ready to go. But I'm kind of waiting on y'all to tell me when to file it. But hopefully, that's something where I can help later on in the future. The bill has already been written. But we'll look forward to y'all tweaking it some, and we'll see if we can get it presentable. As you know, that it has to kind of follow same guidelines because multiple states will be actually signing it and looking at it. So, but look forward to working with you. I think there's a lot we can do. We do need to encourage the nurses to go into that profession and students into that profession. I did HB 277 last year for teachers to kind of do a different route.
Representative Walker, Thomas, time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Dr. White.
Thank you. The next question is related to the nursing shortage. And I know some of you spoke briefly to that. But if you could elaborate a little more. Is the nursing shortage crisis a priority to you? And how do you plan to address the shortage related to retention and recruiting? So, Mr. Wade, would you like to start, please?
Did you say Wade?
Wade, William, sorry. I guess I could say your whole name.
Whatever. You know, living in every day, I see the nursing shortage firsthand. You know, at one point, I think we had more than, almost half of our nursing staff, or at least a third, were traveling nurses. And we still had trouble meeting that need. I think there's some things we got to do to think out of a box, maybe even a regressive tax where the more that the individual works, pick up extra shifts, then they're taxed at a lesser burden than they are under normal circumstances. I think some of those things that we can do, we give tax incentives to everybody. Why not the places where we, you know, we're seeing these vital shortages? And I think we continue the path of loan and forgiveness for education. You know, we've got some of those established in place now. I think we can expand that further. But I think the looking hard at the tax incentives, I think to me is a good way to work on that.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Representative Ims?
Here again, I'm a good listener. So, I think that we need to hear you all's suggestions, the nurses who have boots on the ground, to see what you all think would be a good solution to this. I have a niece who is a nurse, not in Kentucky, but she is a nurse. And I know she is totally wiped out, just wiped out because I just can't imagine what you all have gone through through the pandemic. It's been hard on everybody, but especially you all who are right on the front lines. I'm ready to listen to do whatever we are capable of doing as a legislator.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. Representative Thomas?
My unmute button. Yep, I was kind of excited. We did pass House Bill 573 last year, which kind of gave some incentives and kind of a loan program. But I'd like to expand on it and hopefully, you know, maybe even loan forgiveness. I was mentioning in my last minute and a half that this year, I did pass House Bill 277. I was mentioning in my last minute and a half uh, that that this year I did pass House Bill two seventy-seven, similar for the teachers. And that gave the teachers a new way to get their degree. And uh, they were able to work in the system while they got their their education and still had to pass all the praxis tests too. So I'd like to see something similar with the the nursing program that where they're able to work in the the hospitals and and do certain things and stuff while they're getting paid, while still taking their classes and and furthering their education to get their eventually their A P R Ns or whatever degree they're after. So hopefully, we can work with some of that and and we'll kind of go from there.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Ms. Doughty?
You're on mute? Yeah, thank you. All right, so it is that is the nursing shortage a priority? I think it has to be. I don't think we have any, I don't think we have any option other than to make it a priority. And so uh, we need to look at loan forgiveness. We need to look at uh, trying to uh, help nursing students uh, access or pay their way uh, through nursing school. But also, maybe we need to look at starting kids down that path in high school. Um, recruiting in the high school and then doing maybe some transitions from the high school to uh, post-secondary education for students. Because if we want to fill that in, we we've got to start early and get kids on that pathway.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Um, Dr. Hernandez Stevenson?
One of the reasons that I decided to run for office was so that K C T C S would have a voice in the house. And I know that we have a lot of great programs, our nursing program being one of those. And I think that we really need to get creative and try to find ways to recruit more students. You know, having different recruitment activities here in Muhlenberg and Butler Counties. Well, for those students to come in, but definitely promoting our K C T C S institutions and the programs that are there. I know a lot of people are talking about loan forgiveness, but think about some of those options as well. Loan forgiveness is important. Um, the other scholarships, Work Ready Kentucky Scholarship is a great option too. But definitely trying to find ways to work with the current programs that we have, give incentives for those students who are enrolling in those programs. And even incentives for the faculty, you know, essential workers, they were some of those that were overlooked when we were all receiving um, money throughout the pandemic. Most of the healthcare workers were not. So I think that even doing things like that, going back and saying, thank you for what you've done for us. Thank you for being out there on the front lines, um, trying to do your part to protect us would be very beneficial and show more nurses that they are appreciated because they don't see that. You all don't see that. I shouldn't say they, but you all don't see that. You don't get the respect that you deserve. So I value our programs and I think doing more for the community college nursing programs would be a great start too.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to pass this back over to Julie Denton for our next question.
Thank you. So this question is, what would you like to see as a priority for Kentucky nurses? And we'll start with uh, Representative Ames.
I guess my 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 answer would be, what would you like to see? Uh, Julia, because you all know what you need. Um, I I want, maybe we need to, uh, I I know with the nurse practitioners, we've had some problems with some restrictions that the nurses have had. And I would like to see, we've tried to get, I know that passed before too. I'd like to see maybe some of those restrictions lifted. So uh, they will have more freedom and not be out that money that they were out for 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 some of those things. Uh, there again, I I just, I I would like to know what you all are needing and make that a priority.
Thank you. Ms. Doughty?
I think one of the things I would like to see as a priority for nurses is that we uh, develop a system whereby nurses have input into their daily uh, work and in their daily uh, in their profession. Because as professionals, um, they know the problems and they probably have a really good idea of how to solve those. So we need to get more nurses into the profession, but we also need to keep the nurses that we have. And one of the ways to do that is to put them on the front lines of helping solve some of the problems that they encounter every day. Giving them more of a voice into what happens in their profession.
My brother's a nurse and he just said that to me today. So I guess this is the second time today I've heard that. Dr. Hernandez Stevenson?
Well, let's make it a third because I agree with it too. I was thinking right along those lines, but also, as I mentioned earlier, more incentives. You know, one of the conversations I had is that a lot of travel nurses, they their pay increased significantly during COVID. But all the other nurses were working the same amount of days, hours. They were still in the hospitals and in the different areas working, but their pay didn't increase the same. So I think that looking at some of the pay scales, uh, increases there, more incentives and allowing nurses to have more of a voice. I know that even in my field, we have people at our system office who they know what's best for us, but they're not on the front lines doing the work, talking to the students. So it's hard to to hear that, that we we have a voice, but I feel like we could have more of a presence. And I think it should be the same for nurses. You need the people who are doing the work, having an opportu, the people who are doing the work need to have an opportunity to say what they need and what is best for them versus someone who's not in that field telling them what they need.
Right, thank you. Representative Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, well, I I really think that, you know, Kentucky, we're we're holding on to our borders there. But I think uh, so so much of the uh, compact could help. My daughter is uh, currently serving in the military. And her husband is too, so they're both, but they've moved five different times in the last, you know, four or five years. And to make licensure easy once these military move, you know, if if they move to Fort Campbell, Kentucky for the them to immediately start work. I know we passed Senate Bill ten that kind of helps the board be able to give temporary licenses until the full license comes. So we're trying to make anything easier for nurses to be mobile and uh, be able to come into our communities and into our state and still be able to start practicing right off the bat. So I'd like to see that. And then of course, whatever we can do to just attract more to the profession, uh, I'm going to be all for.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Williams?
I I think I got to go back to, you know, the nursing staff that I talk to here are are very supportive or or look for the support of just support in general, the the safety and security of their needs uh, every day. Uh, you know, oftentimes they, you know, the assaults and the stuff that takes place and then they get, uh, it gets written off by, well, we we can't do this because of it's a policy violation of HIPAA or this or that. And I think we need to, you know, clear out those people that are mean versus those people that, you know, are genuinely uh, or incapacitated. So I think that support is big. I think uh, you know, I didn't get to go too far in my tax uh, incentive ideas, but not only in the pay, but also uh, tax incentive uh, increases uh, uh, in in that childcare issues. We see that a big problem here that that people have issues with a twenty-four hour, seven day a week uh, facility uh, in nursing in that that field, uh, childcare uh, needs or or they come up a lot. Uh, so tax incentives and that uh, would be a would be those those things would be a big priority for me as well.
Thank you. And I'll pass it back to Delinor.
Well, thank you. Um, there were a couple of comments in the uh, Q and A box. One of them um, is from an anonymous person who says that, oh, it went away, but I will, I remember. The the comment had to do with clinical um, spaces um, for nurses, for nursing students in hospitals and other areas. And the comment basically was, while we want to have more nurses, we need more nursing students. That we need places for nurses to be, nursing students to be able to get their clinical hours. And so I thought that that was a a potent comment. Um, then there was another comment that had to do with um, what do you think about mandatory hours that nurses could work so that they won't get so tired? Um, what do you think about mandating something like that? And I'm going to start with you, Representative Ames, because I can see that you have an answer waiting to go.
I wish I did. Um, the question was mandating hours? Is that what the question was?
Yeah, it's it's basically, they're asking, do you think that there should be, like they have with truck drivers? You know, truck drivers and also with pilots. They can only work a certain amount of hours. And so I think that this person was looking for, what do you think about something like that for nurses that would help with patient safety, just like it helps with airlines not crashing or um, truck drivers not crashing?
Uh, I think it would be a great idea. I know Emily, my niece, would have loved that. Uh, she had to fill in so much of the time because they, it's well, when we had, when you had the COVID, so many of them were getting sick. You know, I don't know how you would mandate that if you had another pandemic. But I I, you know, I think that would be a great, great idea if if it's if it's feasible. I I guess I would be for it. If if that's what uh, the the nurses, well, I can see how helpful it would be. A- as you were saying, the the safety of the patients, but but also their health, the nurses' health also.
Ms. Doughty, what do you think about that?
I think it, I think for nurses as well as doctors, uh, mandated hours are a great idea. Because when you have a caregiver who is exhausted, um, your ability to remember critical things that need to be done or uh, handling medicine or giving, you know, giving or doing procedures on patients, uh, that's going to suffer if you have individuals who are absolutely exhausted. And because all of us need a certain amount of rest in order to be able to function appropriately. So I think it's a good idea. Now, do I think there's going to be some situations where that just can't happen? Yeah, I think there are. But I think the go-to and the norm should be that there are mandated hours that people can be expected to work and do their jobs appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, I think we do have some Department of Labor uh, coverage on some of those things now. And you know, I I think opening um, testimony or whatever you want to say from uh, from representative there about the uh, research base, I I think that, you know, I would be supportive of some research-based ideas that say, you know, this length of time, a nurse can't work past in a certain day. Um, so you know, I'm I'm in general, um, don't like to restrict uh, uh, employers. Uh, but I I in a research-based format and a, you know, an educated um, opinion of that, I I could be supportive of that.
Thank you. Ms. Hern- and then Hernandez Stevenson, what do you think about that?
I agree that it's something that should be done. And one thing I think about is a lot of those, a lot of us who do really good work, we're rewarded by doing more work, you know, that's that's kind of the way things fall. So if you do a really good job, you may be asked to come in, you know, and I think it would depend on the area. It would depend on the number of nurses that you have. I also think talking to nurses in the area or it with the employer would make a difference too. Seeing what they feel is best as far as working hours. Because I haven't, I work long days sometimes, but it's not um, mandatory. So I think trying to figure out what's going to be best for people in different areas, depending on the size of the organization and how many staff they have, that would determine some of the hours too. So I don't know that there's one size fits all for all nurses, but I do think it should be mandated somehow. I just don't know what that should really look like. But we, nurses are responsible for other people's lives. So they're not just thinking about themselves and their health is important too. If you're not taking care of yourself, you can't take care of others. So those are some things that you definitely have to keep in mind.
Thank you for that response. Representative Thomas, I know you have some ideas on that.
One second, I unmute there, hit the wrong button. Uh, I do, and and I have a different perspective. I actually have my Class A C D L driver's license, so I get to drive those big trucks. At times, that can be so inconvenient when you're only forty-five minutes away from your home and you're almost safer to go ahead and get that extra forty-five minutes to your house than just have to stop and do a ten-hour reset. So some of that. Now, the other perspective I have is uh, when I was thirty-nine, I actually had an aortic aneurysm and a widow maker. So I have some artificial parts in my chest, but to say that, thank goodness, Dr. Patrasik out of Nashville was on call that night. Now, he had already worked a long day, but I don't think I'd be here. There was only, at that time, for widow maker and putting an artificially ordering and stainless steel valves, there was only about sixteen doctors across the whole nation that could do that. And thank goodness, he was, he was there and he stayed. And I know that was a long day, but my surgery was five or six hours. And uh, thank goodness, I'm still here. But uh, so mandating hours when it can be life-threatening, I I I'm a little concerned about there. So just want to let you know on that.
Thank you. Thank you for your response. Um, I have a comment here um, from a person says currently um, that they have a an associate in respiratory, but currently they're in nursing program. They don't have any more school money left. And are there any grants or anything that's available for school money? I don't think it's fair to penalize me for wanting to switch over to nursing. All I can say is go nursing. I'm sorry, respiratory is going to miss you. However, what do you all think about um, more grant money for people who are changing their profession to nursing? And I'm going to start with you, Mr. Williams. What are your thoughts?
I I think it'd be necessity to do that. Uh, you know, again, going back to the incentives and the encouragement. Uh, I think we got to remove all those barriers that that are in people's way. Um, that 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 they can go into the nursing profession. Uh, you know, everybody here knows that there's a shortage. And anything we can do, uh, you know, that we haven't tried, that's 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 working, we we got to try it. Uh, and I would be definitely in supportive of that.
Okay, Representative Ames, tell me what you think.
Well, I think that we uh, it's like we've been saying, we need to do everything we can to keep the interest up in this. And uh, if so many, so many things, a- as a legislator, I have noticed so many things boils down to the money. And uh, uh, but this is, this is very important. Uh, if this is going to get some more nursing, uh, uh, nurses trained, then yes, I am for, I'm for that. Yes.
Ms. Doughty, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, actually, I am very uh, much in favor of providing grant money and school money for students who want to pursue nursing or social work or education or whatever. I am always going to be pro-education because even though it is, it is a cost for the state, it's also an investment in our future. Um, we need nurses, we need social workers, we need teachers, we need police officers. We need all these folks. And so investing in their future, I'm all for it.
Representative Thomas?
Yes, uh, so much of the grant money always comes from uh, federal, federal funds. But I would love for the state to be able to try to draw down federally whatever we can and then maybe do a state match. I think that would be the best way to optimize the grant money and make it go farther. Uh, but I am, I'm, I'd be all for exploring those options and and helping fund that because it is true. I mean, I I wouldn't be alive for nurses. It was funny that uh, after, after, when I was healing and and coming out of a coma for a couple of days or so, nurses kept stopping by and looking in into my room. And I'm like, I wonder why they're doing that. And finally, one of the nurses said, well, we've never seen anybody survive that. So we just wanted to see someone who actually survived a widow maker. So uh, but yeah, it really worked. God, God put me back here and and wasn't done with me yet. So uh, but yeah, whatever we can do to pull down money from federal and and state to help get people into the nursing program, I'd be all for.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez Stevenson, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, for me, if it weren't for uh, scholarships, I wouldn't have been able to get my doctorate even and tuition waiver. So I understand, I wasn't eligible for Pell So I understand I wasn't eligible for Pell money whenever I was in school. So I understand the challenges of trying to figure out how you're going to pay for school. One of my colleagues asked me today. They were surprised that I didn't have any Pell money at all, but I wasn't eligible. But my, my parents made too much for me to qualify for Pell, but didn't make enough money to really send me and my sister to college. So I completely understand that. I know we talk about some of the options that are out there and I do think that we need more funding. And students who want to change their career paths shouldn't be penalized for that because it's something that I see on a regular basis. You have students who earn a degree, but now they're not, they don't qualify for a certain pot of money because they have that degree even though they want to go into a different field. So just from the students that I serve, and if you want to talk after this, the, the person who talked about not having any money for nursing school, I don't mind to help you find resources. I don't know if that's allowed, but chances are if you're at a community college, I can help you. So I'm all about us trying to find some, find ways to help students overcome those barriers because we need more people in these fields. So we need to do our part to make sure that they get there.
Thank you. Dr. White, would you take the next question?
I can. Thank you. The next question by one of the participants is if you could share your thoughts on mandated safe staffing ratios for nurses? So we'll just go around the room again. Representative Thomas?
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure what the ratios are right now of how many have to be on a floor per, per, you know, patient or anything, but that is something that, you know, all hospitals probably have different guidelines. And, and I think it also depends on, you know, if it's an ICU ward or if it's, it's also a NIC unit or something like that. So I'm not sure we need to micromanage, you know, the whole industry. But I'm sure so many, so many of the hospitals probably already have some of those, you know, requirements already in place of how many nurses to, to the patients, just like they would at a nursing home or anything else. So I'm not sure it needs to be mandated, but I am supportive of making sure we do have enough staff out there.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Dowdy?
Well, when I think about it, mandated staffing ratios for nurses, also, I mean, schools have staffing ratios. We have to have a certain number of teachers per number of students. And that varies from, that varies from type, you know, student needs across the board. For example, you have more staffing for special ed students, students with special needs than you do for students who are just part of the regular population. And so I feel like staffing ratios is probably something that needs to be looked at. I don't know particularly how I feel about it in terms of pro or con, but I do think it's something that needs to be investigated. And it could be true that many hospitals already have that in place and that's how they know how many nurses that they want to put on staff. But it may be something that needs to be investigated for, just across the board to see where that's, see where that lands.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next would be Dr. Hernandez Stevenson.
I'm kind of up in the air as well, but my thoughts are people don't know how much you care until they care. People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. That's a quote that comes to mind. And we're talking about all of these things that we want to do. We're here because we are in support of nurses. However, a lot of these concerns are coming from either nurses or those who are trying to pursue a nursing degree so that they can go into that field. So obviously this is something that's important to you all. And so for me to say that I'm here to support, if this is something that you all feel needs to be looked at, something that needs to be changed, then I'm here to see how we can do it. I don't know what that would look like exactly. Because as I mentioned before, I've never served as a state representative, so I can't tell you what I would do, what policies I would put in place because this is new to me. But I am open to hearing ideas, open to listening and figuring out what nurses feel are best. Because sometimes your employers may have an idea, but they don't know for sure. You know what you're capable of. You know what you're capable of compared to me as well. I'm not in that field, so I can't tell you what should or shouldn't be done. But if it's a concern that's being brought to us, I think it's something that we do need to listen to. And we do need to try and figure out a way to make it safer and better for the staff. Because as it was mentioned earlier, you know, if we walk in a hospital and only two thirds of the people are there, then we know there are some issues. We know that all the people can't receive the care that they need. So I am in favor.
Sorry, Delinor is muted, but you hit your time limit. Thank you for that information. Thank you. Okay, next, Representative Imes.
Yes, I, I, I too think that, and hope that each hospital, each medical facility, they have something in place for this, for the safety of, of the patients and the nurses both. I don't, I don't like the word mandate, but if that is something, if some way, I'm, I'm, I'm open to listening and again, listening and seeing what can be done in that area if, if you all, as a group, think that it is a problem.
Thank you. I'm going to pass this back to Delinor then.
Actually, I think Julie has a question that she'd like to propose to the candidates.
Yes, there is a question that workplace violence is an issue for nurses causing harm physically, mentally, and emotionally. We need proactive efforts that keep nurses safe and policies that create disincentives for people to abuse nurses. What do you see as a policy that might address this growing problem? Let me start with Dr. Hernandez Stevenson.
I think about a policy, maybe if you do mistreat a nurse or something that you are penalized for that. You know, that's one thing that we don't talk about and we don't really think about because nurses and doctors and those in the healthcare fields have to go through so much. But a lot of times if you're not, if you're not in front of it, you don't think about it. But just like, I guess in the school systems, you think about whenever you are abusive to anyone or cause harm, that I don't, I really don't know what type of penalties there may be, but it could be something related to a fine that you have to pay. It could be that you're not allowed back at that facility. Just all would depend on what type of harm. I guess it would be a range of different things that may occur. But again, I would like to hear what some of your ideas are, but I do think something needs to be in place so that people know if you do these things, you will be punished or you will be penalized. And I think employers need to make sure that they're showing that they value their nurses so that people know we're not abusing them. You're not allowed to abuse them either. It's just like family. You don't put your hands on them. You don't talk to them crazy or do anything. I don't do those things. You're not allowed to do them either.
Great. Thank you. Representative Thomas?
Yes, you know, I'm assuming we're talking about some patients there and things. And what's very troublesome is if you go to a hospital later in the evening, you know, I've seen some of these patients, but they're strung out on drugs and everything. And it's, it's, you know, it's almost like the officers don't know where to take them. Do they take them to jail? Do they take them to the hospitals? And we do need to do something to protect the nurses and doctors there from, from some of these people that, that could get very violent. I've, I've seen it in person when I was at a, at a hospital visiting, you know, a relative there. So that is something we need to look at. You know, though Julie, since you're the one asking me the question, what I depend on is good lobbyists. Good lobbyists to tell me the issues of, of the group that they're lobbying for. And I think, I think that really helps. And, and if, if this is an issue, then let us know and we'll work with everyone and try to get a bill written or, or see what we can do to, to help with some of this.
Thank you. Representative Imes?
I, I think it goes back to, to what we've been saying is, is we need to strengthen or make the penalties stronger for, for those who do abuse, this abuse the nurses, hurt the nurses. We need that, some kind of laws in place to, to, to help, to help the nurses. We need that, we need to strengthen the penalties, make the penalties stronger for those who are doing the harm. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Ms. Dowdy?
Well, everything I think about, it just goes back to my roots in terms of education. I do know that there are laws on the books in Kentucky against, people can be charged with abuse of a teacher. I'm not certain about laws on the books where you, you could be charged with abuse of a healthcare professional. Now, certainly, if we're talking about someone who is under the influence or whatever, that falls into a different category. But if we're talking about someone who just doesn't like the rules of the hospital and wants to abuse the doctors or the other healthcare professionals because they don't like their rules, that's a totally different thing. And I feel like we really need to have laws on the books that do offer penalties for people when they abuse healthcare professionals in a clinic setting or a hospital setting.
Great. Thank you. Delinor?
I was on mute. I want to say thank you to everyone for participating in this forum. And I'm going to turn it over to our president to close us out. But before I let her close us out, I just want to say, nurses, the KNA, we want to be a resource for you. We have 89,000 experts at our fingertip. Please let us help. Please ask us because we want to provide that information so that you can write those bills that will support nurses and nursing and patients. President Madder?
Yes, thank you guys. This has been a great discussion tonight. We really appreciate your time. Just a few thoughts. There are, there are quite a few scholarships out there that are available. I know we've talked about students not having funding that they needed. There are scholarships available through the Kentucky Board of Nurses, which is actually, they are actually funded by nurses renewing their licenses and getting their license. So nurses there are paying for nursing students to have scholarships. So be aware of that. KNA has some scholarship opportunities also. So loan forgiveness is wonderful, but there, we, we tend to not have a great uptick on our scholarships, which is free money, you know? So please make sure that, you know, anyone you know that's a nursing student is aware of that. Interesting, talking about staffing ratios, the American Nurses Association has recently, has kind of discussed that issue. One of the things that, one of the candidates I think mentioned is the fact that you have different ones. It's not like a one size fits all. So that's really where acuity comes in. So we would really want any kind of ratio information to really include what's going on with the patient, the condition of the patient, the acuity of the patient, not just a number. Mandatory overtime in general is, we, we don't have a huge problem with that in Kentucky. There's not a lot of mandatory overtime, but there is still that pressure of, you know, that if you don't sign up for an extra day, your, your colleagues are going to work, be working short because, you know, somebody's off sick with COVID or something like that. So that is definitely an issue. Thank you, I think to Wade. One of, one of you guys brought up the workplace violence and that is indeed a huge issue, which we really intend to tackle a little harder. We've, we've tackled it some with KNA with the resolution and some education, but we definitely need to address that in a, in a more formal manner as in the upcoming years. One of the things that also was discussed was nurses having a voice in how their work goes. And there's a concept called shared governance, which I think that you guys probably are not very familiar with, but it's, it's kind of a hospital-based nursing concept. And that is where staff nurses are part of committees and things that really do discuss staffing and quality issues and research and education and topics and things. And we definitely would want to promote shared governance. But again, that's a, that's a hospital-based thing and definitely not all nurses in Kentucky are working in hospitals. So just to kind of keep that in mind. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is something else you might want to just do a little bit of Googling about is a, a concept called just culture. Recently, and like I guess this in the last six months to beyond that, three years probably with Redondavat in Tennessee, there's been some criminalization of nurse errors. And it could be any professional, any medical professional, not just a nurse. But that's another thing that we see really bubbling up to the top of the issues is that criminalization of errors and particularly medication errors. So there's a concept called just culture that talks about how you don't base your, how you handle that on the patient outcome. It's really based on how, how did that error happen? Was it just total human error or was it whatever? So anyway, I won't go into that because that's a whole nother sideline and topic. And just some, some really important topics that our organization is, is interested in and you may want to look into a little bit further. But thank you so much for being here with us tonight. It's been a great, great town hall. And we're a little bit early, so that's always excellent. And yeah, great, great dialogue and thank you all very much.
We, our next town hall is, our last town hall is next Thursday. And anyone can come as an attendee and listen and learn. And so I wanted to give a shout out to all of our attendees. We have a large number of students that attended tonight and I want to say thank you for participating. And the Kentucky Nurses Association is here to help you as well. And thank you all and good night.